As you know, we had an election very recently. And this chamber has acquired new members. I would now like to welcome those new members. If I could ask... I'll read out the name and the vote of each new member. So these three members can stand and be safely forced right to the end. Andy Croy, Home and Wipers. Richard Deliskie, Lawton. Emma Holmes, Charlton. Five Jones, Holton. Charles Magitz, Hinchamset, North. And Polly O'Whittle, Westmore. Welcome to the chamber, gentlemen. And ladies, of course. And I hope you enjoy your next four years very much indeed. We now move on to election of mayor for the new civil year 2016-17. Before I do that, I'd just like to say a few words about my last 12 months. My fellow members, thank you most kindly for your professional and wonderful support during the last 12 months. Your splendid cooperation has made my job very, very enjoyable and pleasant. I'd like to now thank my consort and wife, Cinder, for her kind support without which I would have struggled. I'd like to show my appreciation with a small hand. Next, I'm I just to say something. I'd like to thank my communications officer, Aunt Marie. She has supported me extremely well and kept me on the straight and narrow for the last 12 months. Aunt Marie is a very disciplined professional and deserves a gift from me. I'd like now to thank Andy Colgrady and Aunt Hunter. They've advised me in all matters diplomatic and democratic. Your help and advice made my job very bearable and joyful. Thank you, Andy and Aunt. And last but not least, my deputy, Bob Pitts, for making himself readily available to deputise each time I was not available. About my chosen charity, ARK, who provide excellent counselling for young people and their parents. Few things are more important than the emotional health and wellbeing of our children and young people. This has been identified as a priority in both the children's community partnership and in the health and wellbeing board. I'd like to thank many people from the bottom of my heart who helped to raise funds for my charity. These people of these include organizers from Walking Lions, Rotarians, Unicom, Half Marathon and Walkingham Walk. The final figure of money raised, I believe, is just in excess of £21,000. These funds will boost ARK's finances and help reduce the waiting list for those young people and their parents for much needed counselling. I was indeed privileged and honoured to be part of the very first Walkingham Walk last Sunday, organised by Walking Lions and the one and only Sam Hedington, which also raised £2,000 for my charity. I thank the organizers and wish them well for organising future annual Walkingham Walks, which I'm certain will raise much needed funds for the future mayor's charities. And finally, I attended my charity golf day at East Berkshire Golf Club today. My sincere thanks to the organizers of the Windsor Forest Unicom Club for organising this event, which further raised money for my charity, ARK, and that which is not yet available. Having completed my term of office, I now understand why previous mayors used words like privilege and honour when deciding their roles. Being the first citizen, I welcome members of the Royal Family. These included His Royal Highness Prince Andrew, His Royal Highness Prince Edward, and Sophie, Countess of Westmore, all on separate occasions. My wife and I were indeed very privileged to be invited to Buckingham Palace by Her Majesty the Queen to her garden party a few weeks ago. This was indeed a great pleasure and an honour, and we very much enjoyed the party. During the year, we were also guests at the residencies of High Sheriff of Berkshire, Lord Lieutenant of Berkshire, and the Bishop of Reading. I also attended the regional finals of the mock trials at Reading Crown Court and was delighted to congratulate a halt girls' school in Walkingham for winning the regional finals. They go through to the finals, national finals, in a couple of months' time. I visited care homes, schools, and was welcomed into places of worship of all faiths. I experienced all the arts our wonderful borough has to offer, from singing to orchestral concerts to acting and art exhibitions. I welcomed new citizens and handed out awards to exceptional residents, including a World War II veteran receiving his Legion Medal, the highest French military honour, on his 101st birthday. It's been a whirlwind, wonderful time. My personal privilege and honour comes from experiencing firsthand the diverse and generous nature of our community and from being asked to represent all our residents as the first Sikh mayor of Walkingham Borough. Thank you. I'd now ask for nominations for the mayor. councillor Stanton.
Would you speak now to us?
Yes, please.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor, and a very good evening to you all. And may I join my own wishes really, and thanks to you for the job you've done so very well the last year. As you are aware, members, I will always be brief, as is my custom in this chamber, and tonight will be no different from normal service classes. You'll be pleased to know. My speech should not run over time, as Borien has had me tightly with our high-tech egg timer, but I must warn you I do like hard for your necks. More important, I would like to propose councillor Bob Pitts, Robert Pitts, to be the borough mayor for the new municipal year 2016-17. Following a meeting I had with councillor Pitts, it is clear to me that he very much wants to perform this very important role. He has some excellent ideas and plans, which he wants to bring to this role, which is exciting and indeed welcome. Bob has had a varied career, which has allowed him to develop skills in our league and city. Both in the RAF as an aircraft engineer, to a customs official at Heathrow. You know them, they look at you as you go through the green section with nothing to declare, with their extra bottle of wine. However, he is retired now, so you're looking here. Do you think quite, don't you? People worry, but you're... In addition, Bob has a very great social conscience, and he's performed excellent work here on the corporate payroll to law, which monitors and counts as looked after children, and I know how good he was as I was chairing at the time. In addition, he is served well on a fruskin' power, which is a vital service to so many young people, who find themselves difficult to serve, or too often no thanks of their own. Many young people have been world champions under Bob Pitts, and he has helped give plenty better lives. He has also done magnificent work for Royal Bar Hospital, and anybody who supports him gets my vote. He's also a very funny man, who as deputy mayor, as I understand, has used many in residents' retirement homes. And he's become a bit of a celebrity of them, so much so that residents almost want to keep him and ask him to stay and try to prevent him escape to go home for that. I was looking forward to that mayor program today, Rob, and I noticed there are lots of visits to see our senior citizens, most of which are making this fashion request for their staff. We have an essential good man here who is the ideal candidate for mayor, for all the reasons I have indicated, and many, many more, the time events may might mention you. I will therefore ask, if any member in this chamber supports me in supporting Waltham, and would urge you all to do so to create a great mayor for Walkingham for the municipal year 2016-17. Thank you very much.
Councillor Stanton, thank you very much for that, and you're almost all of my thunder, so I'll be very grateful indeed. Bob? Bob's been my deputy for the last 12 months. A few words I can describe Bob very, very well. He is reliable, always there if needed to deputise me. He's cheerful. He's helpful. Always ready with a tail or two to break the ice. I think he'll make an excellent mayor for the borough, and I wish him well during his term of office. Thank you. I understand councillor Ferris wants to say a few words.
Yes, I'd like to... I'm not sure if you seconded then, Parry, but if you hadn't, I would like to second Bob. I think he would be someone who would represent the whole of the borough. He is well known by all of us here, and some of the tributes that Rob has just mentioned, and we on his side would be more than happy to second him for being mayor this year. Thank you.
Can I ask now if there are any further nominations? Thank you. For you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Can I therefore ask members to indicate their support for councillor Pitts to be elected as mayor of Walking Borough Council for the 2016-17 municipal year? Thank you, I can therefore confirm that councillor Bob Pitts will be elected as mayor of Walking Borough Council for the 2016-17 municipal year.
Please be seated. I, Bob Pitts, having been elected to the opposite mayor of Walking Borough Council, declare that I take that office upon myself and I will do due and faithfully fulfil the duties of it, perform to the best of my definition and ability. Thank you. Well, members, I'm conscious of the honour you've placed upon me tonight. I feel very humble and also very unworthy. I will do my best to uphold the traditions and values of the council, especially the borough. As many of you know, I live in Ruscombe, which is part of Remnant Walgreens Ruscombe Ward, which is one of the most norbly of the 17 parishes. They often feel forgotten, so one of my main things this year is to try and make them feel loved again. I look forward to being a ambassador for all of you, and will always strive to represent you to the best of my ability. I will serve the residents, wherever they are in the borough, with enthusiasm and dignity. I have chosen Workingham Men Cap as my charity this year, and any money raised will be used to fund the Workingham Borough family liaison work for providing preventative early intervention support. The aim for the role is to help stop families reaching crisis point by providing personalised emotional and practical support to parents and children who want to ask for it. With that many charities this year, Workingham Men Cap has reducing funds, whilst demand for their services remains constant. They're affiliated with National Men Cap Charity, but are entirely independent from them, and they have been working tirelessly to serve the local community within the borough since 1997. I was born on the Isle of Wight, and I know Parry was the first Sikh mayor. I'm wondering if I'm the first Isle of Wight mayor you've met. I served in the Royal Air Force in civil service, and as you know, I was elected to serve the ward of Remnant. I still pursue my interest in Roman archaeology when I have time, it's getting increasingly difficult to find time, and I also sing with Reading Male Force Choir. But when I fill up some peace and choir, we take out our free board of colleagues, which is great fun. I have some people to thank. I mean, Parry, Bob and I say you've been a wonderful mayor to work with, you've been a good friend, and a trusted, confident advisor, and it's been a great year working with you. I have met some fascinating people along the way, and also made some friends. Also, I could not have wished for a better mayor secretary than Aunt Marie. We're incidentally been a good friend for more years, and we both care to remember. Little did we realise all those years ago when we were studying archaeology together that we'd be here now. Thank you, Aunt Marie, for your friendship over the years, and also your wisdom and guidance over the past year. Last but not least, I'd like to thank the officers that I've worked with over the past year, especially Aunt Hunter and her team. I think I'm going to be in serious trouble, I forgot to mention Val. She has been a wonderful support and has played a full role as consort in all the functions that we have attended together, that's what she told me to say. She has also been a very patient sand eagle for speeches, and also did sing herself as a natural Morris dancer. When we visited the Hearst Morris people, I say no more. Once again, thank you very much for your trust in me, and I will do my best to fulfil your trust. Right. I would now like to present Parry with the And now the outgoing mayor's console. Surrender? Val, your turn. I would now like to ask for nominations for deputy mayor, and I claim the privilege of proposing councillor Rob Stanton. What can I say about Rob? What have we got all night? It is my privilege and pleasure to propose Rob to the position of deputy mayor. Rob has had a long and distinguished history in this council, and prided out in industry as an area manager for WX Smith. He's held the position of deputy leader and executive member for children's services to name but a few. He has worked tirelessly for his residents in this council, and I believe that him becoming deputy mayor and then mayor does have just reward for his service to all of us. He is noted in dedication, his wit, and most of all for his short succinct speeches with full authority. I am proud to call Rob my friend, and look forward immensely to working with him this year. I'm sure that he would do a great job, and also keep me on the straight and narrow, he's had lots of practice at that. I therefore ask you to support my nomination of Rob as deputy mayor. Can I ask for a second up, please? That's what I'm thinking.
Thank you, Your Worship, and may I be the first to congratulate you on joining your role, and I hope you enjoy it. I'm very, I will be very proud to over second councillor Rob Stanton as deputy mayor. He's held a lot of senior roles in the council, but when he was executive member for children's services, our paths crossed quite a lot, and we often shared the same stage. And I know that Rob will be a great ambassador for this council. During that time, he did lots of presentations to people like our talented young people in this borough, and to our look after young people. So I'm very proud to work with Rob in that way, and I'll be very proud to work with him as deputy mayor. I welcome you, Rob, as deputy mayor, and be very proud to second him. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you very much. Councillor Bray.
Thank you, I can't do the seconding. I will be brief, unlike councillor Stanton. And so, it is a very great pleasure to say that we will be supporting him for deputy mayor, particularly because this time last year or just before that, there was every chance that he might not make it to this year. So we're extremely pleased that he has made it, that his health has taken a turn from better, and we look forward to having him as our deputy mayor for the coming year.
With such a formality procedure, can I ask you all to show your support, please? I think that's fairly unanimous, apart from Rob, I think he's a centre. I therefore announce that councillor Rob Stanton has been elected as deputy mayor of Walking Borough Council for the 2016-17 municipal year. Rob, would you like to come up, please?
I would. I, Robert Stanton, having been elected to the office of deputy mayor of Walking Borough Council, declare that I take this office upon myself, and I will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of it, according to the best of my judgment and ability.
And I'd like Maureen to come up please. Rob's long suffering while. Chief Speech Rob. Visitors are free to leave now if they wish to. I'm sorry, it's the first time I think anyone's upstairs, Rob.
I'm accustomed as I am to making speeches, particularly short ones. But I won't disappoint you. Mr Mayor, first of all congratulations, that's you. Congratulations on your appointment and I wish you very success. Members and guests. I would like to take this early opportunity to congratulate Rob Pitts on his appointment to be the Mayor of Wokingham for the next municipal year. I think he will be fine Mayor and do an excellent job and I look forward to working with him. It is indeed an honour for the members to ask me to deplore this for you. This important function and I would be delighted to carry out any duties as and where required within reason in the name of both the Mayor and Wokingham Borough Council and the members. I am actually well trained as a deputy and I spent five very exciting years as the Deputy Leader to my friend councillor David Lee. Which I have to say was an absolute pleasure on most days. Take it, I love you. We certainly have some very exciting developments that have come here and I look forward to working alongside my colleagues, you, across the council. We deliver many of them across the borough which gives the most satisfaction to me to see the progress that we can make as a town in this very competitive world. In fact, I will be able to once again visit any institutions that I have worked within the past in various roles in this council as Dianing has alluded to. And I do look forward to seeing their progress and sharing and supporting their plans. It is of course a real privilege for an expat of Chiswick who landed here in Wokingham back in 1990 to become the Deputy Mayor. An honour I shall cherish and I thank the elected members of this august council that it spoke to bestow on me that privilege on behalf of all my residents. So thank you very much members, it is much appreciated. Lastly, I want to thank my wife Maureen for talking me into this role. Some days she tried to talk me out of it, but she in the end said do it. Supported me for 41 years and consequently the last year. And as you know, this time last year things looked pretty grim for me. But to be here tonight is quite amazing, standing here making this speech. And so much of it lives down to Maureen. The best carer I know. God bless you, God bless you all, thank you very much. Oh man.
Visitors are now free to leave, this time it's true. Should you wish to of course. Do we have any apologies or abstinence please?
Mr Mayor, we do, I have apologies from councillor Blumenthal, councillor Kate Hames, councillor Halsall, councillor Jarvis, councillor Pittick, councillor Shepherd-Javay and councillor Soo.
Thank you. Can I ask you to have a look at the minutes on pages 11 to 42, are there any amendments to be put forward? If not, can I have your agreement to... Are there any declarations of interest? Right, we now move on to public question time, can I invite Jan Hurd to ask a question please?
My name is Jan Hurd, I'm Vice Chair of the Mid and West Berkshire Access Forum. The question is to the Executive Member for Planning Highways. Malcolm, is that right?
Mark.
Ah, Mark. The Mid and West Berkshire Access Forum was deeply disappointed to discover recently that contrary to the advice contained in its submission for planning application and its presentation to Wokingham Borough Council at the planning meeting for Reading Football Club's academy, a signal controlled crossing was not made a condition of approval for this application. Furthermore, no developer funding was secured for the crossing and a feasibility study that we were told by your countryside officer in November was underway has not happened. Explain how this situation has arisen given that Reading Football Club offered land at no extra cost at the planning meeting and that it was acknowledged that the crossing could be funded through sale contributions and detail the reasoning behind the decision taken by Wokingham Borough Council not to provide such a crossing.
Hello Jan.
Thank you for your question. The crossing location is part of the council's ambitious Greenway project and we will be looking into the feasibility of providing a crossing used by equestrians and other users at this location as part of the project and in due course. The matter was discussed at the planning committee and that resulted in Reading Football Club verbally promising to make land available to accommodate the crossing if the feasibility study is positive. The Greenway project proposes several routes across the borough which will need to be delivered in a phased approach over a number of years. The order in which these routes will be delivered is yet to be agreed and will depend on the complexities of the various routes in terms of land ownership issues, environmental constraints and overall costs. So once we've an agreed programme for delivery of the greenways, we'll be able to provide an indication as to when the crossing could be provided. Currently, there is no capital funding allocated for the Greenway project but it will be in the financial year 2017-18. Thank you.
Jan, do you have a supplementary?
Yes, definitely, I'm hearing you. Yes, thank you for your response. Our concerns really revolve around the fact that the land is available now and of course it may not be by the time you get your plan together. I will certainly go back to the lab with the response but to be honest, it doesn't really answer the question that we asked about why this couldn't have been achieved out of the planning application. So if I can move to my supplementary now, please. I have spoken to Anthony Stansfield who's the Police Commissioner, you're aware. And one of the problems with putting in a crossing is often speed limits and so on but he has told me that the police budget will contain no money at all for enforcement on rural roads. So a speed limit then becomes slightly irrelevant. You might also like to know that West Berkshire Council are installing a crossing for £20,000. This is a signal controlled crossing, that's half the cost that these things usually have been. And really what I would like is for Wokingham Borough Council to make a commitment to work with the lab so that we can find a way to actually make this crossing a reality please.
Okay, firstly I'd like to thank you for being my first question in this role, that's brilliant, thank you. But being new to the job, I haven't the answer to that but I've made several notes there. So we'll work on it and I'll come back to you with a written answer and probably talk to you face to face. Thank you very much.
Can I now ask Guy Graham to ask his question please?
Thank you Mr Mayor and congrats on your new role and your deputy as well. Could I ask my question to the Executive Member for the Fire Department please? In the recent election, it's been claimed that the main opposition party will commit to curbside glass collection regardless of the cost. Can you confirm the figures of looking into this process?
Thank you for your question Guy, Mayor, thank you. It's been our ninth Mayor in this borough already. This question gives me the opportunity to give you further support to further support our provision of glass recycling. There are two ways to collect glass at the curbside. The first is to use a completely separate vehicle to collect the mixed glass. This would be more convenient for residents but it would cost the council around £600,000 a year to provide this service and the glass would not be recycled as glass. It'd only be used for mixed glass for building and road foundations for aggregate. The second way would be to collect it in black boxes together with the other recycling materials often referred to as co-mingling. Although the actual collection costs would be minimal, again the mixed glass can only be reused for road and building foundations and not recycled. An additional risk to sustainable markets for paper card due to the high risk of contamination and there'd be significant capital costs to remodel the sorting machinery at Smallby, something Wokingham would have to pay for unless Brackman and Reading also wanted to have this separation facility. We have 39 bring banks and two household waste recycling centres which kept approximately 3,000 tonnes of glass in the last year. That's from Arber. We accept that we need to do more to increase the collection of glass for recycling and we're working on additional sites, especially on new developments to make it easier for our residents to access and use them. All glass collected in the scheme is recycled into new green, clear and brown glass which also saves around 450 kilograms of CO2 per tonne in energy and saves valuable resources. So we believe the majority of collectible household glass is recycled because residents prepare it to take into our bring banks. So why spend £600,000 to collect glass that cannot be recycled as glass? A very short sighted approach by our opposition.
Do you have a supplementary Guy?
Yes I do, thank you very much, thank you for your answer. I agree with your comments on the short sightedness as by micro calculations that is a 1% council tax increase on its own before any fines due to contamination etcetera and we can't even recycle the glass it seems, so not very green. We're doing the budgets more important areas to consider such as social care. You mentioned that there are currently 39 bottle banks, I call them, in the borough. Could you let me know how many more the Borough Council is looking to bring online and if there are any for early?
Mr Mayor, thank you for your supplementary Guy. I agree it was short sighted to put forward the curbside collection idea knowing the very successful arrangements we have in place for our collections and operating our recycling systems and the financial implications that are covered. As far as new bring banks, they will be primarily in areas of new developments which early is not experiencing. However, if local residents can suggest possibly to be slightly early, we'll definitely investigate to see if they are suitable and possible. We have to take account of safe parking areas, noise to nearby residents and proximity to other bring banks amongst other things.
Mr Kate Melvyn who asked this question, councillor Oates please.
Thank you Mr Mayor. Can I start by congratulating you on winning the vote to get the job? My question is to the current leader of the council and reads as follows. A council's deal with public money needs to be careful how they spend it to make sure everything is unproperly and there is no maladministration or improper spending. Please could you tell me what you would consider would be improper use of public money by Wokingham Borough Council?
Thank you Mr Melvyn. My focus and intentions are very much about ensuring we have systems in place to ensure we make the best possible and proper use of our council taxpayers' money. So I'm going to answer your question from that perspective. The governance and processes we have in place to ensure proper use of our resources are significant. We have a publicly agreed constitution that sets out to these arrangements. It includes giving specific resource allocation powers to the executive and to the overview and scrutiny bodies to call in and examine such decisions made by the executive. There is an audit committee that oversees our governance arrangements which includes use of money and an audit team that supports them and alerts them to any issues of concern. The scope of the audit committee includes a whistleblowing policy to ensure any concerns of improper use of funds can be safely investigated together with other policies to safeguard funds such as the money laundering policy and counter fraud policy. Furthermore, a host of financial arrangements to ensure proper use of resources is contained in the financial regulations and numerous financial management arrangements which fall under the responsibility of our statutory chief finance officer who is next to you. In conjunction with our executive lead member for finance, all these arrangements are of course subject to authority. I would say that there is a considerable amount here to ensure the proper use of money and the improper use of money would be either not having such diligent arrangements in place or allowing it to be breached, neither of which I would allow to happen, thank you.
Do you have supplementary questions?
I do, I don't write shorthand, just hang on. Thank you for your response, as I say, more detailed than I was expecting, oh I can cope with reading but I will look forward to reading it in a minute. It doesn't take me much further forward on the particular issue that I wish to raise with you. And it relates to in February this year when you were considering what to do with the 2.1 million transitional relief that John Wedgman fought so hard to get from the council. Did you email to suggest that in quotes, "We take a long, hard look at whether we can relieve some of the 1.7 million reserves" that was earmarked to cover the shortfall to provide a boost to council candidates on election year by some additional spending in some critical areas? How do you view that suggestion now?
I don't comment on linked documents, I'm afraid. Basically, that did not happen. It was just something of this suggestion, it didn't happen and it wasn't.
Thank you for that, so this is, you agree with my...
No, that's, if I can stop you please Mr Hurd, that's the supplementary. Right, do we have any petitions? The passengers can leave if they would like and stay if they really want to. Thank you for your questions. Now we'd like to make a report to the Returning Officer. The report is in the back. Can I ask for a proposal in a second, if they would, please? That's all yours.
Sorry, I was quite in a misplace.
I was looking in your direction.
I apologize. Congratulations, by the way, Bob, and I hope you're a great woman. I'd like to propose the adoption of the Returning Officer's report. Just point you to the tactics on the grey papers rather than the white papers and a couple of typos, including an insulation of the little Democrat numbers. They will be corrected on the grey papers, so I'd like to ask you to do those. And I'd also last long to speak to like to thank the Returning Officer and all the staff who were involved in the elections and in the town. I think they did a very good job, it was very efficiently run. And I don't know about anybody else, but as a candidate, I was really pleased that the council was over the night of the election, rather than having to wait until the weekend, like before, so I'm hoping that maybe we'll be able to do that again.
Do we have a second then? Perhaps as well as you wish to speak now, or do you know? Any other members wish to say anything on the report? councillor Ferris?
I would just echo the comments that just said. I think the elections went pretty well and I didn't see too much in most of the areas that we went. So, thank you.
Can we, the vote is to note the contents of the revised report as tabled. Can I have your agreement to that, please? Thank you. Any against? Any abstaining? Any tired out? No, okay, thank you, that's the motion carried. Now move on to the mayor's announcements. As you might understand, there probably aren't very many from these. But all I will say is that it's my intention during the year to adhere to the constitution, to the timings of speeches and questions, and I'd ask members' agreement to work with me on that. And also to add that, and this will focus members' minds for the member question time, that I would like to invite you all to have a small drink and some nibbles afterwards. So the longer you go on, the later it gets. Thank you very much. Now move on to statements from the leader of the council and executive members.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Very quickly, I'd just like to say something before I begin my speech. I would like to congratulate both of you, particularly councillor Stanton, because not only has he the honour of being our deputy mayor for the forthcoming meeting, I believe he's the only ever councillor of this borough that has been mentioned in the Queen's speech. For those of you who might be interested, talk to Rob afterwards, but he was yesterday mentioned in the Queen's speech, so congratulations on that. So you can start from the top. Before I talk about my executive for the coming year, I'd like to make a few comments on the recent elections. It was a difficult set of circumstances that surrounded these elections, making them one of the most difficult campaigns for many years. The opposition put in a huge amount of effort over the election period, but despite that, we were still the most successful party on the council. As you look around the chamber, you will see missing faces. Our longest-serving councillor, Bob Latt, hung up his political shoes after an amazing and lengthy period of service. I wish him well in his retirement, but I know he will be keeping a watchful eye over all of us to make sure we do things properly. Mike Gore also retired and I'm sure you will all join in to wish him all the best as he deals with health issues. On the Liberal Democrat bench is the interesting character of Tom McCann, who could always be relied on to make noises on the back bench, is no longer with us. Nikki Jerome is also another councillor who is no longer here. We all felt a huge degree of admiration when she spoke in this chamber about the mental health issues she had unfortunately, which she had, which unfortunately caused her to step down. Whilst we are on opposite sides politically, I have the utmost respect for her and what she did here. My final comment on missing councillors is reserved for a good friend, Guy Grandson. Guy was a young councillor who made a great contribution during the time he was on the council. New and younger members are the future of this council and all parties, all parties need to get younger people involved. I know Guy will not fade away and he will be back at the earliest opportunity. All of these missing councillors have been replaced by new councillors with a variety of backgrounds. Can I take this opportunity as leader to welcome them all tonight and encourage all of you to take an active part in the running of this council? Last year, I spent some time talking about the regeneration of Wokingham Town Centre. I suggested that the opposition should be more constructive in their stance against the regeneration. This was based on the election results then. The elections this year have shown that absolutely nothing has changed. With little else of substance to say, they fought this year's campaign on a continuation of their outright token hostility. To be fair to them, they did produce an alternative plan, something that they never do without the annual budget. The plan totals three hundred and fifty words. If you include captions and features, such schemes of moving a grocery store to an industrial estate and making it online only. More worryingly, it would do away with much needing new housing in Wokingham. Sadly, it gives the impression to residents that the leader of the opposition, who spoke eloquently to this council about the need for more houses, is determined to rob hardworking people of new homes because of this obsession with the completely unworkable so-called alternative plan of Wokingham. Now let me turn to my executive as I have made many changes to both the structure and personnel. First of all, the biggest change is to split highways and planning. At the same time, I have moved the town centre regeneration well into the newly formed planning portfolio. My view is that now that the planning approvals have been approved or obtained, I could no longer justify a separate executive role for this. I am extremely pleased to announce that councillor Ashwell, a former deputy, has agreed to take on that role. This provides the continuity needed to drive the regeneration implementation forward. He will be aided assisted by councillor Bowery, who is a longstanding member of the planning committee and brings massive knowledge to this partnership. He will be specifically looking after the creation of the new local plan. Councillor Murphy, who has done an amazing job in steering all the planning applications through the hostile waters, is stepping down from the executive and moving to a chairman role on one of the scrutiny committees. IOAs will now be under the responsibility of councillor Richards, who is no stranger to this area, having been a deputy here. He will be joined by councillor Slight, who will continue to carry out the excellent job on railway and air transport matters, but now formalised as a deputy. Councillor Kaiser, who formerly carried out this combined role, has decided to leave the executive and I would like to thank him here for all his efforts over recent years. His contribution will continue in the role of vice chairman of the management scrutiny committee. I've long felt that affordable housing was in the wrong portfolio and I have taken the opportunity to move this to the health and wellbeing portfolio under councillor Maggie Summer. That means everything to do with this area is now back together under a single person. He'll be joined as deputy by councillor Autie, who has extensive experience in this area and is a non-executive director of our housing company, W O L. He will be specifically looking after the affordable housing part of his portfolio. These are the key changes to my executive, with one more to complete the new structure. The voluntary sector has now moved to be within my portfolio. This sector is a vital participant in assisting this council going forward. We will inevitably be looking to them to get more and more involved across all service areas. By putting it into the leader's portfolio, we'll give it that high profile which is required. Whilst it is not normal to speak of any appointments outside of the executive, there has been some changes which warrant an exception. Councillor Weeks, who has been the steward of the planning committee, has agreed to step aside to allow his vice chair, councillor Holton, to take on this role. Councillor Weeks will be stepping into the role of chairman of the management scrutiny committee, where I know his skills at dissecting huge items of paperwork will be extremely helpful. I would like to thank both councillor Holton and councillor Warner Paulingson, who are both stepping away from scrutiny for all their efforts over the years. Like so, they have been managing a variety of the scrutiny committees for a very, very long time and the time was right to hand over the baton to other councillors. Finally, a word about the way forward. None of us can deny that we face difficult times ahead, but this Conservative group has a positive plan to take the council into the next decade and beyond, one that will see services that meet residents' needs without robbing every penny from their pockets to pay for them. Two years ago, I had the privilege of being elected leader. We started on a journey then. Let's all of us, members on all sides, go together to complete that journey and build a flagship authority that we and our residents can be proud of. Thank you. Mr Mayor, if I can just step outside of the leader, I have a request from Children's Services about fostering week if thus appropriate. Thank you. As we are currently in the middle of foster care fortnight, sixteenth to the twenty-ninth of May, I'd like to ask members to remember the key messages that we are currently recruiting foster carers, an incredibly important role. In particular, foster carers for children over seven years old, children on a permanent basis and disabled children with short breaks. More information will be found on fostering either on the website or talking to councillor Higginson. Thank you for that, I appreciate it.
Do any other executive members, do any other executive members wish to make any statements? Thank you. Councillor Brad, do you wish to speak?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and I'd like to start by congratulating both you as a new mayor and the new deputy mayor. I also would like to welcome back all those councillors who held their seats this time, but in particular, obviously, Lindsay Ferriss and Rochelle Shepherd-Dubé, the Lib Dems. And also welcome all the new councillors of all parties. And I hope they will enjoy their time, but obviously particularly Clive. It was interesting to see he who used to sit at the front and ask the questions and this time it was Guy who's taking over that role, so we look forward to that. I also would like to pay tribute to the councillors who either lost their seats or stood down this time. And in particular, I think the council will not feel the same without Tom McCann's frequent interjections. But to move on from that, if the Conservative leadership on this council think that having a large majority means residents support whatever the Conservatives choose to do, they should think again. The Lib Dems got well over a quarter of the vote across the borough. We won Twyford, Willsch and Hawkedon at a gallop. We had a huge leap forward in our vote share in evidence and came within a whisker of gaining Enbrooke. At some point, perhaps when the bulldozers go into the Rose Street car park or into Elmsfield, you will finally realise that your plans for Wokingham Town Centre do not have public backing. We will continue to campaign for alternative proposals which are considerably longer than three hundred and fifty words and our regeneration that fits Wokingham as a market town. And we will continue to work on the other issues that we know residents think are important. We have five priorities. We fought the election on them and those are the priorities that will guide us this year. Using money wisely, listening to residents, looking after the vulnerable, protecting green spaces and standing up for residents wherever they live. In the light of what I'm going to say next, I would ask you to bear those priorities in mind. We are all used to spin. After all, why wouldn't someone present a plan in the way that they feel best suits their case? But there is a step between spin and distortion and a further step from distortion to misinformation and from there it's only a tiny hop to out and out lies. The tactics used by Conservatives in Enbrooke in both the local elections and the town council by-election in February, in our view, crossed the line from the acceptable to the unacceptable. And I know there are Conservatives, some in this chamber, who share that view. Politics and politicians have sunk very low in the public's opinion and this kind of behaviour just reinforces that view. The public then disengage. In the long run, democracy is damaged. And politics matters. Every decision made in this council affects someone's life. All politicians need to do better. Now, it's my belief that most Conservative councillors and our new Labour colleague would agree with the Lib Dems that we are all elected to serve residents and that it is perfectly possible to disagree but work together for the good of those residents and perfectly possible to look for political advantage but still keep a moral compass. However, earlier this evening, a question was raised about the moral compass of the leader of the council. The leader's response to Keith Mulvaney's supplementary was to say he didn't comment on leaked documents. I don't think he's going to get away with that response for long. In my view, the only way that the email he sent on the tenth of February can be interpreted is that he wanted to spend council money so as to give Conservative candidates an advantage in the elections. Whether any such spending took place is neither here nor there. That email sends a clear message. The leader of the council thinks the interests of the Conservative Party come above the needs of residents. Given that he also signed what we consider a very disingenuous and misleading letter which was sent out as part of the Conservative campaign in Enbrooke, we believe Keith Baker's conduct has fallen below the level that should be expected of a councillor, let alone the leader of the council. Seven days' notice is required to call a vote of no confidence in the leader, so we cannot do it tonight. However, I can tell you that we have made a formal complaint to the standards committee, which I've given Andrew Molson earlier this evening. We think Keith Baker should stand aside. This council should have a leader who will put the needs of the residents of the borough first, not the interests of his own political party.
Thank you. Now move on to members' question time. Councillor Gary Cowan.
Oh, thank you, Bob. As Reading Football Club has made an offer of land, a facilitated crossing on the B3030, what actions has the council taken to date to secure the land for future use?
Councillor Ross.
Thanks, Gary, thanks for the question. The matter was discussed at the planning committee and the discussion resulted in Reading Football Club verbally proposing to make land available to accommodate the horse crossing facility if required. Only once a feasibility study is complete will the council know what land is required to accommodate the proposed horse crossing on either side of the B3030. Consequently, we are not in a position to approach Reading Football Club or other islanders to secure any land this time.
Councillor Cowan.
Thank you. I refer to the reply the executive member for planning gave earlier on to Mrs Jan Hurd in which he said that the offer of land for the crossing was conditional on a feasibility study, but this is clearly not the case. And if you watch the planning video, you will see that that's apparent. And the offer was from Brighton Royal and Reading Football Club. Her question also mentioned a survey which was supposedly underway last November, but I contacted officers recently and they said no survey at all had ever been carried out. So I felt that it was not the correct thing to say. My question is, how can residents have any competence in a planning system that is content to break its own planning rules when it serves them at the expense of residents it purports to support? Could that explain perhaps the disappearance of the council revision from the planning committee's agenda?
Councillor Ross.
I am not able or willing to consider what the planning committee itself has, whilst I, independent legal body, have decided at that evening. What was made clear by my colleague in the answer to Jan Hurd's question was that the project and the feasibility of this is included in the consideration of the Greenways Project and it would be only right and proper for it to be included in that so that the whole process is integrated and we will be working together on ensuring that that does happen.
Thank you. Can I ask councillor Alison Swatser a question of the leader, please? Can I ask Councillor Alison Swatford a question of the leader, please?
My question to the Executive Member for Highways. Could the member please provide an update on the council's transition to parking?
Thank you for that question, Alison. An executive report is being prepared for the 30th of June 2016, which will ask for approval required to make the application to the Department for Transport, TFT, and then Parliament to introduce civil parking enforcement, CPE, throughout the borough. The traffic management team are revising the lines and signs throughout the borough and ensuring the traffic regulation orders, TROs, are correct, which is a requirement of the application. In addition, the team are mapping the parking restrictions so that the restrictions can be more easily viewed and understood by the public. This work will conclude in autumn at about the same time the TFT application is submitted. The traffic management team will consult with the public on small changes to the TROs and allowing maps to replace text-based TROs. Once the council approves this, officers will then start to prepare for taking on the duties of civil parking enforcement to go live in May 2017.
Do you have a supplementary question?
I do. When CPE starts, how will the public know what and where the parking rules are?
Prior to the activation of CPE, there will be a considerable amount of public information in terms of newspapers, adverts and notices, public posters and on the website and in various other places. In addition, there will be new road markings, road signs and post signs advising of the parking zones and the local parking rules. So they will be known in advance.
Members, it's my duty to propose that in accordance with Rule 4212M, the meeting continued from nine o'clock for a period not exceeding 30 minutes. We're not going to get through the business in the next 10 minutes. Can I have your agreement to that, please? Thank you very much. Councillor Paul, can I ask you a question of, I'm assuming Keith Baker is the executor?
Thank you. Can the leader confirm that our council's constitution explicitly prevents petition related to a council if it relates to a live planning application?
Thank you. Yes, you are absolutely correct. The council's constitution states petitioners will not formally be accepted if they are in any way related to a planning decision. And this includes both current and proposed planning applications. If a petition is submitted which refers to a current or proposed planning application, it will be referred to the development management team and will be considered as part of the representations received for that particular planning application.
Do you have a supplementary?
Yes, I do. Yes, thank you. In light of that answer, does the member agree that it was highly misleading of the leader of the Liberal Democratic Group to say in the Wokingham News on a petition relating to Elmsfield and to quote, "It's not valid for the council to suggest that they can't take the petition." And therefore, Councillor Bray should apologise to this council and the residents of Wokingham Borough.
I'll give Councillor Bray a reply there.
The petition in question did not refer to a live planning application. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Brayman.
Actually, I seem correct. In light of the attack on myself, it's amazing that Councillor Bray is not prepared to apologise. But now, sir, for absolute yes, she should apologise.
Thank you. Councillor Yunes, to ask you a question of, Councillor, could you make a tale?
Thanks. My question is to the Executive Member for Children's Services. Could the member provide an update on the council's response to the government's rule out of the academyisation of authority-controlled schools?
Thank you, Councillor Yunes. And firstly, before I start my answer, I'd like to congratulate both you, Mr Mayor, and also your new deputy on your election this evening. Planning had been undertaken before and then subsequently, following the White Paper announcement of the aspiration for a full academyisation programme. Following, prior to the White Paper, the council's executive committee had voiced broad support for the national agenda for academyisation, proposing a member tasking finish group. Just a couple of days ago, I wrote to the Secretary of State about enhancing these moves. Officers have been in direct dialogue with schools, with academyisation being the subject of a workshop, the head teachers and chairs of governors on the 3rd of May, and the focus of the school's business manager's briefing on the 11th of May. The heads briefing later this month will take the agenda forward in the context of a likely mixed economy of maintained and academy schools, following a clarification of government policy. What is known from the information thus far is that the Secretary of State has reasserted the aspiration for all schools to be academies, but wishes to respect the emerging views about the purpose of compulsion for good or outstanding schools to convert to academies. Areas discussed include academies and multi-academy trusts encompassing educational focus and purpose, quality standards, possible school briefings in the makeup of multi-academy trusts, constitution, financial change and process, and lastly, potential role of the local authority as commercial partners possibly, and the champion of pupil and/or the instigator of the large-scale multi-academy trusts.
Councillor Yunes, also.
Yes, I do. I understand some of these schools currently have licence deficits. And those schools, just in case if those schools become academies, what would happen to those lasting deficits?
Thank you, Councillor Yunes, for your supplementary question. If a school is forced to become an academy because it's considered to be coasting under the new provision definition in the White Paper, which will not be applied until autumn 2016, or the school is judged to be in special measures, then the council would be liable for keeping that debt. There are just a very small handful of schools in this borough that that would apply to, and the council will still be able to negotiate with the school's funding agency to ask them to keep the debt on the transfer of that school to becoming an academy. The vast majority of schools in this borough are judged to be good or outstanding and are much more likely to choose to voluntarily convert, becoming an academy trust or academy in this area. Lastly, it's useful to understand that licence deficits come out of the designated schools' grant reserves and are limited to 40% of these reserves. As the designated school grant shrinks, as schools turn to, more schools turn to becoming academies, so does the proportionate size of that 40% as well. That pot will shrink, obviously, therefore limiting the ability to make available further licence deficits.
Councillor Harry Summers.
I'd like to ask the Executive Member for Children's Services to provide an update on the situation at Southfield School, please.
Thank you, Councillor Harry Summers. Osted confirmed the judgment of special measures for Southfield on the 26th April. This followed an unannounced inspection in March and the lengthy course insurance process involved. Southfield have received good ofsted judgement in 2013. However, late in 2015, concerns grew and the local authority subsequently issued a warning notice. These findings were also endorsed by the Inspector HMI on behalf of Osted. Issues focused on management of people's behaviour and site safety. Pupil outcomes and teaching, learning and assessment were each judged to require improvement, but the overall judgement was that it was inadequate.
Councillor Leonard.
Yes, thank you. Can I ask, what the authority has done about these findings?
Thank you, Councillor Harry Summers. Since the inspection, several actions have taken place. Dialogue has continued to be maintained with parents and other local authorities whose pupils are placed at Southfields. Parents have broadly been supportive and signed the moves to address the improvement. Some school sessions were closed, particularly at the beginning, for a short term, with priorities being placed particularly on the youngest and the oldest pupils. Pupils were returned in phases and parents kept informed. The local authority has withdrawn the governor's rights to a delegated budget and effectively assuming responsibility now for finance and also human resourcing under powers which are resulting from statutory schools causing for concerns violence. Now the school has a new interim and experienced teacher and she started on the 9th of May. Post-Osted planning with the local authority is ongoing and being monitored and taken forward with the school for their next HMI monitoring inspection, which will take place either next summer or at the autumn term. And lastly, the regional schools commissioner has issued an academy order, which is consistent with the new Education and Adoption Act. This will require the parties to collaborate in the mood of the school in this situation to becoming a responsive academy. Work is in hand between Wokingham, the Department for Education and also the commissioner to identify a suitable academy sponsor.
Thank you. Can I ask Councillor Troy to ask this question, and my also Wokingham councillor?
Thank you very much for your kind welcome. Keith, thank you for your very kind words about Nicky. I'll make sure that they're passed on to her. May I add to the congratulations to the mayor and to the deputy mayor? My question is for the Executive Member for Children's Services. Does the Executive Member for Children's Services share my relief that the government seems to have suspended its plans to force all our primary schools to become academies?
Thank you, Councillor Troy. And may I congratulate you on your recent contribution to the council? My understanding is that the government has reaffirmed its commitment to a full academy system for schools. In terms of how it happens, it's been judged that a statutory requirement is currently unnecessary. The executive committee has adopted a broadly positive stance on academyisation, recognising some outstanding questions about capacity to support the change process and costs. And you heard him talk about that earlier, about writing to the Secretary of State. Those questions are likely to be eased by a more permissive, laissez-faire approach to academy conversion, Richard, how about you?
Councillor Troy, do you have a quick supplementary?
I'll keep it very, very quick. Given that there is no evidence that academies will improve the outcomes for pupils, why should you be wasting money converting schools to academies?
The drive for this policy comes from central government, as you know, and we have taken a paper through our executive and will be supporting our schools to move towards academyisation over potentially a four-year period. And we will support them the best way we can, but we always believe that the standards are a different thing in the children's education, the absolute foremost, and whether they are academies or local authority schools, the children's education is the most important thing. So I think the title is sometimes irrelevant and can be overlooked.
Now moving on to the fiscal balance report. I need to ask for a proposal and second, and the proposals to speak from this, or? Thank you, Keith, for just proposing it. Thank you. Do we have a second, or do you wish to speak? Any other person to speak on this report? In that case, we'll move straight to the board. Recommendations as set out in the future table sheets, Appendix 1. Can I ask your agreement to that, please? Congratulations indeed. We now have an appointment with Chair and Vice-Chair of the council committees, et cetera. I intend to do these on block, and really, I think it would be difficult to ask for your approval. So can I ask for your approval to these appointments, please? Thank you. Any against? Any abstentions? Thank you. Appointment to powers working groups, which are the green table sheets, I tend to do these on block as well. Can I have agreement to the nominations set out in Appendix 3 for the green sheets? Can I ask for your agreement to these, please? Thank you very much indeed. That motion to carry. Appointments to outside bodies. I tend to agree the nominations for the appointments on block, and I require separate votes on those where there's more than one nomination as highlighted. So I need to, need to individual vote on Age UK Twyford, please. We have a nomination from the Conservative Councillor Jarvis and Councillor Ferris from the Liberal Democrats. Can I ask for votes on Councillor Jarvis, please? I do apologise, I'm Councillor Ferris.
It's not good to make any difference.
Can I have nominations for Councillor Ferris, please? Sorry, votes for Councillor Ferris. Thank you very much indeed. I declare that Councillor Jarvis has been appointed. Reading Bus Management Committee, the nomination from the Conservative group is Guy Grandison. The Liberal Democrat's nomination is Five Jones. Can I ask for votes for Councillor, uh, Guy Grandison, please? Thank you, Councillor Jones. Guy Grandison's elected. He's only recently left, hasn't he? For what we know is Councillor Grandison, yeah. Wokingham District Citizens Advice Bureau, the Conservative Party nomination is Councillor Harry Barth, and the Liberal Democrat nomination is Councillor Five Jones. Can I ask for votes for Councillor Harry Barth, please? And Councillor Jones. Thank you. Councillor Barth is appointed. Woodney Town Centre Management Initiative, we have two nominations from the Conservative group, and that's Councillor Baker and Councillor Kate Haines. And we have a Labour map nomination, Councillor Andy Croy. This is where it falls down, though. We've got one each side of Councillor Croy, so I'm going to go for the Conservative group now. Can I ask for votes for Councillor Baker and Councillor Haines, please? Thank you. And can I ask for more votes for Councillor Croy, please? Thank you. I think by now ours is Councillor Haines. Can I ask for a vote on the rest on block, please? Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. Yes, the next item, we've had protocol for equipment for an alderman. And can I ask members to ensure that they don't mention any individuals they might have in mind, whoever they might be? Can I ask for a second, a proposal and second, please? Councillor McGee-Summond, do you wish to speak there?
Yes, you are, to be my name. May I add my congratulations to your elevation to the mayoralty and also to Bob Stanton, being the deputy, and I'm sure our council meetings going forward will be quite witty. It is my pleasure to recommend this appointment to as an honorary alderman for Woking Borough Council. The person that we have in mind is fitting for that, and I hope that members will support it. Thank you.
Do we have a second? Councillor Yunes.
Thank you. I'd just like to add a little bit to that. The recommendation, the change of the standing orders is to allow us to create honorary aldermen in future. We had a cross-party Constitutional Group Working Group where we all supported this proposal. It's a very high hurdle that people are expected to attain, that only have to have at least 20 years to serve in the council, but they also have to make significant and evident contributions to the council. And therefore, the council feels that they are worthy of electing on behalf of the whole borough. I'd just like to point out a couple of things about the paper. Obviously, they're not able to vote.